All the meeting in order for legislative session number 2022-17 for August 2, 2022. Does it like to join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance? Please do.
Father.
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, as it is in heaven. And give us thine our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy name is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Jinx to the flag of the United States of America, and two republics where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Approval of the consent agenda passes unanimously. This time we have a proclamation to recognize the month of August as academic preparation month.
Is she here?
Monica Brooks, I believe, correct? Is going to be accepting it. Councilwoman Nicole Ackley will be presenting the proclamation. Good evening.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Very nice. Thank you for coming up to accept this proclamation for academic preparation month. Whereas earning a diploma from high school is one of the most cherished things a person can experience in life, one of the greatest achievements. Whereas attending school daily and having the support of parents to achieve this goal is the best approach to reduce dropout rates in our school system and to show our children that they are truly cared about. Whereas encouraging students to remain in school to learn and to help students understand the importance of following direction and honoring rules are life skills. And mentoring students to learn the value of self-respect and respect for others is essential to their lives. Whereas the clearest path for a child to become a productive and responsible citizen is support and encourage to stay in school. By receiving a high school diploma, the foundation to build a productive life may be realized and the student will see their dreams come true. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and Acton County Executive hereby proclaim August 2022 as academic preparation month and encourage all citizens and parents to inspire their children to be successful adults.
Good evening.
I just wrote a couple of notes here, but I just want to recognize Emeritus Mary Shanti, who just came in our building, who has been a significant reason why our significant reason why our Wycomico County chapter has been as successful as it has been. Thank you for this honor, Mr. President, county council members. The Wycomico County NAACP branch is very honored to receive this proclamation recognizing August as academic preparation month. While the NAACP is well-known for its advocacy in civil rights, at our core, education is a primary focus of our mission. Wycomico County and NAACP has a rich history of advocacy and education. We continually strive for the betterment of the educational system and to ensure that there is equal and fair treatment of all children. Some of our advocacy has been the recommending of Wycomico County's school system that we teach financial literacy and that our school systems obtain at least 80% graduation rates of blacks and other students of color. Advocacy for adequate and targeted funding to meet the needs of all students and a focus on community-driven approaches to build a stable, enriching public education system that includes families, students, clergy, and community partnerships. Additionally, our education committee has held many back-to-school rallies at Salisbury Middle School that has provided backpacks and supplies for hundreds of students every year. We recognize the disparages that are happening within our school systems, particularly with children of color. And as a branch, we will continue working to ensure that all children receive equal access to the highest levels of educational opportunities and that all students are treated fairly and that there is indeed no children left behind. We invite you to attend our August meeting where we will be hosting our new superintendent, Micah Stauffer, at our August meeting. So we thank you so much for this honor and we look forward to partnering with you so that we can have excellence in our school systems.
Thank you. And congratulations with your new role as interim president.
Thank you.
Very big shoes to fill over there. Good evening, Mrs. Hurley.
Good evening, Council President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on resolution number 89-2022. This is approving a wireless telecommunications facility lease agreement between Wycomico County and Wireless Edge Consultants LLC. And we have Mr. Tony Rudy here, airport manager, if there are any questions.
This time we open the floor for a public hearing on resolution number 89-2022. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That includes a public hearing on resolution number 89-2022. Entertained a motion from councils to approve resolution 89-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Okay, next is resolution number 90-2022. This is authorizing Tix.com as the sole source vendor to purchase a ticket processing system for the Civic Center's ticket sale platform during fiscal year 2023. And you'll notice that this resolution requires a supermajority vote in order for it to pass, which means five council members need to vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 90-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Resolution lost my place. Resolution 90-2022 passes unanimously.
The next item for business is resolution number 91-2022. This is to authorize the county to acquire easement on 85.82 acres, more or less, within the Quantico Creek Rural Legacy Area from Ralph R. Harkum III and Sharon M. Harkum. The property is located on the northerly side of Athel Road and is designated as Tax Map 26, Parcel 73. And we have Mr. Frank McKenzie here, who is our GIS coordinator and chief technical services.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 91-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor of resolution 91-2022 say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. McKenzie.
Next is the submission of an appointment to the Tourism and Civic Center Commission and three appointments to the Wycomico County Airport Commission. So in accordance with Charter Section 413, the Acton County Executive has formally submitted names for appointment or reappointment to the Airport Commission and the Tourism and Civic Center Commission. Resolution number 92-22 is confirming the appointment of Tessa Jarvis to the Wycomico County Tourism and Civic Center Commission. Resolution number 93-2022 is confirming the reappointment of Wayne Strasberg to the Wycomico County Airport Commission. Resolution number 94-2022 is confirming the reappointment of Nola Arnold to the Wycomico County Airport Commission. And resolution number 95-2022 is confirming the reappointment of Matthew Kramer to the Wycomico County Airport Commission.
It's all right. We can use the serenade on a consent agenda, Mary. Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda on boards and commissions' appointments and reappointments.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. The board and commission's appointments and reappointments are approved unanimously.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public comments in general. Anyone who has any comments that they would like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concern. Please keep in mind there's a three-minute limit and try not to be too repetitive if you feel that may be what's occurring. Yep, just right over the podium.
Okay, I was trying to give people a break from hearing me again.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon. Okay, so I have already submitted letters in the past in regards to our stance for Wycomico County NAACP and Concerned Citizens Against Industrial CAFOs about our stance against DAF tanks. So we are hoping and we are looking for either this moratorium to continue or for them to not even be considered at all. There's really no upside to this for the community, for the community at large, or even the industry in which it's serving. It's a temporary, non-sustainable process that is not going to benefit our community, but it's going to bring negativity to our community, not only in potential health risk, but also in decreased property values. And even though we talked before about it being zoned industrial, whether you do that or not, we're just opposed to it. So, thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is David James. I'm from Wycomico County. And for those that do know me, you know I deal a lot with Route 349, talking about the Riteq, Quinn, Royal Oak, Bivale, Nanticoke area. Every month, a group of the citizens down there will get with me and let me know as John knows and Nicole knows, to let us know about concerns. They gave me a few of them today and I couldn't get them all in here because I only had three minutes. So I'm just going to cover one of them first. Community center down there, the grass is way too high. They actually went in different spots with a ruler. It's like eight inches or higher. There's a scare of snakes, at least for me. And, you know, it's not fun for the kids to be out there and that happens. Riteq, Quinn Boat Ramp has the exact same problem. Also, it seems like, I guess, some people has kind of trashed it. So those same citizens are the ones out there in the morning picking up a lot of trash. They're wondering what's going on there. Mosquito control, you know, I've been talking about that for a while. And we do have a better understanding. Thank you, John, for getting us a better understanding of how that works. The only problem is they have cameras down there. A lot of the people down there, they're not there all the time, but their cameras are always on. And numerous people in the same community streets, like Riteq, Quinn Road and Royal Oak Road, are saying, nobody's coming by at all. So they want to know what's going on with that. And last one was about the waste permit hike. They say it's too high. It's $30, I think, for one vehicle and 60 for others. And they're like, things ain't already bad. So they just want to tell you, you know, take it easy on their pockets. That's it. Appreciate y'all.
Any other public comments? There we go.
Hi, this is Lynette Kenny, Heber, Maryland. And thank you for the opportunity to address you, hopefully for the last time. But I just wanted to say a couple of things. We've been sending you an awful lot of material and I don't need to reiterate that from up here tonight. If you just read the suggested proposed legislation and the analysis, I think that says it all. But there's always been a smokescreen that you can't do this because it's agricultural and it's protected by agricultural and it's protected by the Right to Farm Act. Well, I think that the truth can blow away these winds of smokescreen. And the truth is that other counties do regulate this stuff, particularly not for storage, but the product itself, the waste streams. And I would just like to, I think I sent this to you a couple of weeks ago, but just to reiterate this. This is from, happened in Dorchester County and it's from the McLeod Group that was writing for the county council. The statement in here says, "The county council, through its designated agents and attorneys, fully intends to voice its opposition to the proposed use at the board's October 25 hearing through its designated agents and attorneys and has heard from dozens of property owners and other affected parties who also intend to appear and testify in opposition." So this is the Dorchester County Council telling the planning, the board's zoning appeals, that they intended to oppose the exact same tank that was going to be built by the exact same farmer in Dorchester County. That was the stand they were taking. And I think I also sent you some information from the staff report from their planning and zoning. And this, it jumped out at me when I read this. "The applicant has the burden of proof in this case." And that's here in this county as well. "But there are no criteria to meet. So the board has to consider the arguments from both parties and determine which they find to be the most persuasive, based on the facts presented and the law." So the point here is that whoever argues the best is the winner without restrictions. Now, our point, of course, is we would like to not see any more of these tanks being constructed in Wycomico County at all. They, we didn't want them from the beginning. We don't like them now, the smell, the traffic. But also, what we're doing now is not protecting just our little group of people on Porter Mill and Regan Road, but we are attempting to protect the entire county from having to go through this again and stand up here and go through this whole process. And if you decide not to prohibit the construction of more DAF storage tanks in this county, then you have to put adequate restrictions on it or else it's going to go to a board who, and it's whoever gives the best persuasive argument is the one who's, they're going to listen to. I'd just like to show you, in closing, these are emails and personal testimonies from people that some of our folks went around and knocked on doors and asked them if they would give us their story. This is their stories by emails and testimony. And this is really, really affected people negatively. I appreciate, over the past three years since we've been rattling chains, that the application of this product has improved. And I commend the people, whoever it is that's behind this and who is overseeing this. But it's been a real problem and if we let the pressure up now, I think perhaps in time, these problems will come back. So thank you for your enormous amount of time that you have put into this. It's been three years, two months, and two days, something like that. And I just appreciate that you have attempted to tackle this and look at this from a point of view that will protect the citizens of Wycomico County. Thank you.
Just making time. You're moving tonight. Good evening. I'm John Brown, a resident of Wycomico County. And I'm speaking behalf of the Wycomico Environmental Trust and the Friends of the Nanticoke River. And we, like Mrs. Kenny, appreciate the council's extended deliberations on concerns raised by the storage of the DAF waste in the county and are hopeful that a broad consensus on solutions might be reached tonight. We've been hearing descriptions of the human costs and environmental risks of living anywhere near DAF waste storage in its current form. Yet our county planning department has continued to insist that the storage of DAF waste is agricultural activity that must be permitted in an agricultural zone because the waste is said to be destined for application on farmland somewhere. One zoning administrator even continues to maintain at last month's work session that the Right to Farm Act requires the county to allow DAF waste storage throughout agricultural districts. He also warned the council that he would not be able to enforce any conditions the council might vote to impose because the scope of the legislation is imprecise and cannot be drafted more precisely because of the chemical composition of the stored material wastes. Now their attorneys have suggested to the council that the storage of DAF waste must be allowed here because the Maryland Department of Agriculture treats it as soil amendment and regulates the months during which it may be applied, even though a publication of the Department of Agriculture explicitly contradicts this. And planning officials confirmed at last work session that only the county, not the state, has the authority to regulate the storage, which is what we're talking about. Some have argued that DAF waste must be stored in the county in order to be applied here. However, it was delivered directly from Linkwood or from area processing plants for some two decades before the local storage was even proposed. The Farm Bureau has strongly opposed DAF waste storage in the agricultural zone, we heard last month, correctly viewing it as an industrial, commercial activity instead. This has caused some confusion and the Delmarva Poultry Council has accused that this would confuse things, restriction on the storage of grain and manure on our farms, which is far from the truth. It can be very well-regulated and defined. Speaking of where the Friends of the Nanticoke River, we have focused only on waste DAF storage, DAF waste storage. We've even proposed legislative language to narrow, to limit, and clarify the scope of the draft prepared by the planning department. Any suggestions to the contrary is untrue. We've worked more than two years now to advocate for limitations on DAF storage and now have no confidence in the zoning administrator that he will apply them. The policy preferences of the planning department's staff are abundantly clear. However, they do not legislate policy. The decision rests with the council. We urge you to endorse a legislative solution that provides adequate protections for residents throughout the county and ensures that its intention is understood and honored in the circumstances. And in that, the only effective way to achieve this is to enact a clear ban. Thank you.
So I'm Carol Donahue from Whitehaven. I would, sorry, like to just add one, speak to one point tonight. And it's a concern that's shared by the organizations that John just spoke on behalf of as well. There's been a lot of discussion about whether the county, just in the last few weeks, about whether the county has the authority to ban the storage of DAF waste, if the council so chooses. And there was a paper done by the attorneys who advised the planning department suggesting that that's not permitted. The only problem with that paper is that it didn't cite any legal authority. It was not a legal opinion. I can tell you, as a lawyer, I would have been fired for producing an analysis like that. The council really does need to listen to, I think, more independent sources on this issue. You've got a couple of detailed memos that have arrived and I realize that it's only happened recently because we only recently realized that this was in contention. But King Burnett, who was a noted lawyer in this county for many, many years, has provided you with his analysis. And Bob Taylor has also done an analysis that refers to recent case law, recent decisions by the Court of Special Appeals of Maryland that confirms that you have the authority to ban the storage if you want to. And I'll leave it at that. I have confidence that the council will do the right thing to protect the residents of the county.
Hi, Jeff Sorg, Deerfield Road, Mardella Springs, Maryland. There's no way I can do this in three minutes. I'll do it as fast as I can. I haven't been keeping up with a lot of this. We're talking about the tank issue. This got stirred up in my head about a month and a half ago when I walk out my back door. And then some days it's tolerable, and other days it's unbearable. I'm going to attack this a little different. I don't know if Biff is here. Are you Biff?
No, he's not here.
I would owe him an apology because my anger came out at him and I'm angry at the wrong person. I'm really angry at you people because you're all elected officials, I believe, to represent our council or our county. And I'm going to put a little different spin on this. Yes, I object to tank. Now it's up to the county to figure out a way to make money off of it. That's a waste product. If it wasn't a waste product, you call it an amendment. Anything that's amendment, that would be good, people would be purchasing. This guy isn't purchasing. He's being paid to take this product. Okay, I believe this product has solids in it, okay? Correct me if I'm wrong, just either say yes or no. It may be a sludge or a liquid, but it has solids. The name of Wycomico County, it's not landfill, it's solid waste disposal. Everything should go through the solid waste disposal program. Every truck should have a weight ticket. It should go across their scales, emptying weight. And Biff or whoever is trying to eliminate this product or use it should pay a fee. Use that money, put a cap on the tank, make the air quality better, whatever you have to do, but bring income into the county with it. If it was a local entity, like just Purdue, within the county, I wouldn't argue. But this product is coming from other counties. A lot of it comes from Linkwood. It's the same thing as if you have a Worcester County building contractor putting shingles on a roof. He can get a permit and dump the shingles in Wycomico County. Or he could be doing a job in Worcester County and bring the shingles here if he has a dump permit, as long as he pays. It's a poor analogy. There's so many loopholes in the landfill area. I went down there and tried to talk to them. I don't know the lady's name, but she wanted to sidestep a lot of the issue because it's such a touchy subject. You have Delaware residents that can purchase a permit to put your trash in Wycomico County if you live within a certain distance. So you have these rules in place. I'm going to jump ahead. There's damage on Regan Road right now as we speak. If you come off Route 50 and pass a substation on the left-hand side, I've got pictures, it's probably at least 200 feet long. Somebody's been in a ditch. More than likely, it was one of those trucks. Last Friday evening, my wife and I were going to Mardella. Luckily, we Luckily, we weren't close to the intersection by the hardware store because if we had been, it would have been head-on because these trucks are going in the other lane to get off on the rigging. And you've made it a racetrack. Now, I got to compliment you. Yeah, you paved it, you made it wider. Yeah, you made a racetrack so the trucks can go 50 miles an hour instead of 20. They're not slowing down, and we live out there. My time's probably up. Everybody wants to live in Mardella School District. They're building houses there because you've got one of the best school districts there. And yet, if I go to sell my place, I'm going to have to put a disclosure on the fact that I got to let them know that the stink tank is there because if I don't, I'm liable because I didn't disclose the fact that on certain days, you can't live here because it stinks. And yet, you've got people coming here wanting to have their families go to a good school And that's the other part of it. My taxes, I should appeal my assessment because my house is not worth that with the stink. I don't think any of you live in our area. And one last far-fetched theory or whatever, I saw it in a movie, but it is real. I have air rights over top of my house. They are legally mine. That odor is infringing upon my air rights. I know that sounds far-fetched. You've got Holloway Funeral Home, you have other prematories that are, by state law, they have to monitor their smoke and their odor for the same reason, and other reasons also. But we talk about these air rights. Like I said, everybody who lives around there says the same thing. Certain times of day, man, you can't go outside. It's terrible. But think about what's there. Don't put anymore, but think about making money off of it. If he's going to be allowed to do it, because we were lied to, it was going to be just a wintertime storage. It's being used every day now. So make money off of it. So you don't have to increase our taxes. Make it so it's not profitable for him or anyone that wants to do it. Thanks for your time.
Yeah. Other comments?
Yeah. I'm Pam Olszewski. I live on Porter Mill Road, about a half mile from the tank. I've spoken to you before. It's interesting what this gentleman just said about people wanting to live in the Mardella areas. And it made me think about years ago when William Donald Schaefer, I think he might have been the governor of Maryland at the time, said that he called the eastern shore Maryland's outhouse. And it makes me think, is Wycomico County going to be the sludge pit of the eastern shore? And that's what it seems like it's going to happen if we can't get a handle to legislate or better yet, ban the storage and the use of this DAF material in Wycomico County. This has been a long three years. It's been hard on you, it's been hard on us. But we are the ones who smell this, we are the ones who have the traffic, we are the ones who worry about our water supply. We're all counting on you. Frankly, grow a pair and do something about this. And don't worry about, you know, are you going to run again? Worry about the citizens of the county. You took this office, you ran for this office, hopefully to do something good. And to do something good would be to protect all of us and to make Wycomico County a place where people want to come and live. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Public comments, council comments?
Just a quick comment. I'd like to see at our next meeting if we can get the EV station on the agenda, etc. I know they've asked us to do that. I thought we'd have it on here this time, but I know there's a time element to that that needs to be met. Hopefully, it's not too late, but I know they had sent us a letter wanting us to, you know, they need to know, you know, because there's only so many of these that are permitted. So I'd like to see if we can get that on the agenda for the next meeting.
I just want to thank Monica Brooks for stepping up to the NAACP president position, temporary or permanent. Congratulations, and thank you for taking on that role.
I would request that we not put the EV stations on the agenda. We've had them on there twice, and nothing's ever been, you know, it's been turned down twice. I don't know why we're doing it for three times, so.
Never had a resolution to vote on?
Well, we never had a resolution, but we've had it on the agenda twice.
I thought there was a consensus.
Not to do it.
Well, we sent an email out requesting of all council members whether or not they wanted to have a work session on it, and we only received, what, necessarily one response? Maybe two?
We received one response via email, but then I spoke to the council members, I did not respond, and the consensus was not to put it on.
I was one of them that talked to you and said no.
I responded in the positive. I think the public needs to see us discuss it. Yeah.
Counsel comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work session. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's say a session is adjourned. First item on the open work session is an environmental mitigation agreement with Davie Resource Group. We have Tony Rudy, Mr. Tony Rudy, Director of the Airport. And Mr. Damon Holinski?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I'm now.
If you could state your names and your positions for the public, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening, Tony Rudy, Airport Manager.
Damon Holinski of Davie Resource Group, Senior Project Manager.
To have you here, gentlemen. Tony, you have the floor.
So just kind of in a nutshell, for the runway extension project, I believe it was earlier this year or late last year, timeframe, this all blends together, we entered an agreement with Maple Dam mitigation for wetland mitigation credits. They're a bank, so basically, they have the property all set up, and that acreage is purchased kind of on an as-needed basis. We knew we were going to need quite a bit of wetlands to mitigate for this project, so that last agreement locked in those so no one else could purchase those, and those credits satisfy all of federal and state requirements. We do have additional state mitigation requirements that are needed. And initially, we're in the process of going through the permitting process for the runway extension project for the wetland mitigation. And the state's initial, initially, they wanted, first, they want you to purchase bank credits if they're available. Their second choice was to purchase credits, I shouldn't say credits, their, forgive me, I'm in the fee. Sorry, thank you. And in lieu fee for the state, which go for about $130,000 an acre, their third choice was to do a permitting responsible mitigation. Since the public comment period opened up on the permitting process, the state has kind of changed its mind from comments that were received, and they really wanted the airport to go forward with a permitting responsible mitigation rather than the in lieu fee because Davie already had, I believe it was 17 acres, that were available, they were developing, they were ready to go, or I shouldn't say ready to go, but close to ready to go. And then in addition to that, they were looking at other properties to purchase to basically create the rest of the wetland areas that we would need for our project. So Maryland Department of Environment is pushing us in this direction, and because they're aware of these properties and they're aware of what Davie is doing, that's why we entered discussions with them and came up with this agreement. And I'll let Damon explain a little bit more.
Sure. So as Tony said, the airport needs 50.85 credits. A portion of that was covered by the Maple Dam. That leaves a remainder of 37.61. So the MDE, I was proposing that 17.6 of these credits be covered by our permitting responsible bank, permitting responsible project. I'll explain that for a second. And the balance is covered by the in lieu fee or a second option we can do. So I'll start with the 17.6. So the 17.6 credits, we had a property that we were working through the banking process. So we've already vetted it, we know it's going to work. We've had agencies on the site, MDE, Army Corps, EPA. They like it as a wetland mitigation site, so it's viable. And what we talked to Tony, and what we offer is what we call fixed price solution. So it's almost as simple as a bank credit where the county or Davie takes on all the responsibility for the project, design, engineering, purchasing the land, financial assurances, maintenance monitoring, everything for one fixed price. So what it does is, and it's cheaper than comparison to the in lieu fee credit, so we're offering those 17.6 credits at $110,000 an acre a credit. The in lieu fee goes for 135. So for the county, if they go with the PRM option, this permitting responsible option, it's a savings of $440,000 as compared to purchasing in lieu fee credits. So that covers that portion. We also have, as Tony mentioned, there's an additional 20 credits that's sort of out there that the county can purchase as the option of purchasing from in lieu fee fund, but we are also looking for an additional property that if we can find a property that serves that purpose, we'll show that property to the county, and if it's something the county wants to pursue as a permitting responsible mitigation project, that it's cheaper than buying in lieu fee, that's an option the county can pursue. So a little complicated, but two options on the table. One is the 17.6 of the property we have in hand, and then we're also looking to see if there's a second option that we can save the county money.
Can you repeat the cost per acre again?
Sure, sure. So the proposal we have in front of the county right now is $110,000 per credit, and what that means is for every acre of impacts, that's what a credit is. And as a comparison, we're offering 110. As a comparison, the in lieu fee is traditionally 135,000.
But also, if I heard you correctly, you said you do the design and so forth as part of that.
Yes, sir. We would do everything. So, you know, we would work with regulatory agencies to get the approvals, we would do the design, engineering, construction, maintenance, monitoring, these projects. You do the restoration, then you're required to monitor them for between five to 10 years. So all that is included in that one fee.
We do the in lieu fee, we just pay the, we're just paying the amount, right?
In lieu fee would go to the state. However, though, they've indicated that they would rather us go this route.
Right. And then my point is, but we don't get any, like, design work or any of that comes with that. You're just paying the fee.
And I'm not sure what, the state eventually, I would assume, develops their own?
Yeah, the idea with the in lieu fee is that money goes into a pot, and eventually that funding goes into restoring wetlands. I can't, I surmise from what the reason the state's preference is, this site is that it's a project, they know it's going to work, and there's restoration that goes in the ground at the same time as the impacts are happening, as opposed to in lieu fee, the restoration mitigation may happen in the future. So that's why their preference is, they recommended that the county consider this option for a portion of those credits as opposed to buying in lieu fee credits. And we also, again, I think we, savings as well.
Josh.
So if, just from understanding, the process, if the state, if we did say pay fee and lieu, where the state does there, then eventual off-site mitigation, does that have to happen in the watershed that occurs, that the, in this case?
Yes, the beliefs generally try to tie it together, but I have to double check.
Okay.
Any questions? Mrs. Frolie, where would this go from here?
We would bring this back for a public hearing, and we can do that on August 16th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay, everybody? All right. Okay, John, thank you for Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second on the agenda, we have a discussion with Talky Communications on broadband grant, issue that I know is of interest to everyone in the county. Mr. James, I know you've expressed that in your Western side, and we're going to see how we're going to get there. Gentlemen, how are you?
How good, how are you doing today?
Good, good, good to see you.
Thank you for having us.
Just state your names and your positions, that'd be great. Thank you.
My name's Andre Dematia, I'm co-owner of Talky Communications.
I'm Andre Dematia, his brother, and also co-owner of Talky Communications.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I guess what we're looking for is a breakdown of exactly, you know, how we've gotten to where we are today. I mean, it came as somewhat of a surprise when we received the email the other day saying, what is it, 13.3 million, which has been granted? And if you could, for the public's benefit, explain exactly how this is being done, and we'll give you the floor, the areas that you're planning to cover and your timeline.
Okay. Back in 2021, the county had an RFP to build out broadband throughout the county. We were asked to bid for about 2,000 no-served homes. This is, these grants are only for areas that have no internet, no wired internet. So we applied for the RFP. The requirements for the RFP was to complete the entire, the entire application for the state of Maryland. So it was a very costly application, it was over 200 pages long. The county provided us with some KML files, shape files, of where all the locations were located. The county spent almost a year, if not longer, looking for the no-served areas. Without this information, we would not have been able to bid on the grant because you have to identify the no-served areas. And some counties have a CTC study, which is a company out of Maryland that does broadband feasibility studies. And they sent us the maps and will be able to identify the locations. In your case, your department, your IT department, spent a lot of time getting this information, and without that information, we wouldn't have been able to apply for the grant.
Question, just real quick. Unserved and underserved, is that correct, or is it just unserved?
This grant was for unserved. The underserved may be coming up soon with the next grant applications.
We'll get those definitions a little later for the people who'd like to know what area they fall into.
Okay. Yeah, and as of right now, the underserved is anyone that has, I think it's 25 megabit, that are changing that to 100 megabit, the FCC is changing that. So once that passes, there's going to be a lot more underserved. That will have the grant windows opened up for ISPs to apply for that.
Anyone under 100 megabytes?
That's what the FCC is proposing right now. So we applied for the RFP, and the RFP had no monetary value. The only thing that we actually received from the county was a letter of support. That letter of support with the RFP process was submitted over to the statewide broadband recorded office, and we applied for the grant in multiple locations, and we did win the area near Pittsville. I call it Pittsville, we have a bad habit of calling an area one name because it's internal, we know where it's at. But it's actually 80 miles of fiber that we're going to be laying down. One question that a lot of people want to know is when you're going to start. What a lot of people don't realize is we've already started. We started in March. We have already placed a remote central office in the Morris Road area, which is going to be able to serve 10 miles?
17-mile circle.
17-mile radius. So that's going to cover quite a bit of the grant areas, as well as Old Eden Road area is one of the really hotspots. So they're not necessarily connected together, but we'll be using our partner with Maryland Broadband to be able to connect the two areas together and serve the customers. So it's, this grant right here is covering around 900 no-served homes, so these are 900 customers that don't have internet today. Wireless is not considered broadband, so they count as a no-served customer, like HughesNet or some sort of Jetpack.
So it's 900 instead of 700?
Yeah, it's about 900. We are actually going outside the zone of the grants and picking up extra customers around the area. That's what we hear all the time, is how come you didn't stop short? We normally don't leave customers behind. If someone signs up one or two miles from the areas that we're already at, we usually extend our network to help those customers as well as add more customers to our base.
Okay. Thank you. Take care. Thank you, took care of it all. Questions from council? Josh?
I just wanted to, of course, open it up and give you guys a chance to introduce yourselves, because, you know, a couple of years ago, I remember those of us who've been paying attention to broadband, we were watching the F C C, seeing, I guess, the current, the bid process, and out of nowhere comes this one company who is apparently located in Kent County, I think is what we were thinking, in Chestertown area, and they get an award of two hundred, or a million or something like that, or some, I don't know how much it was.
It's fifty six million in two states.
Which was quite in?
Which is over ten years. So it's, it's, in the grand stream, it's, it's minute amount of money per year. Four million dollars, four million dollars a year to do fiber optic deployment isn't a lot.
So I figured you haven't had a moment to really get a chance to actually introduce yourselves to the, to the broader public. So if there's anything you'd like to say to the folks being in the audience and watching you on there, introduce yourselves and your company, it's good to actually talk you to you.
So I'll give a little background. So both Andre and I worked at Verizon for about sixteen years, we were in the internet department. So we have a really long telecom background, learning the different aspects of a large corporation. We started our business around two thousand and twelve doing wholesale voice and migrated into the fiber optics, because we all know voice is, is dwindling. About two thousand eighteen timeframe, we started in Kent County, that's because that's where Andre's neighborhood was. We had a little argument back and forth who was going to win, and he ended up winning, unfortunately. He wanted my house first. So we've been, we've, are modeling our network off of what we've learned from Verizon. We've also hired a lot of ex Verizon guys, ex Verizon installers and spicers, engineers and designers. So what makes us, I think, unique in my perspective is not only do we have the background of a large telecom, and we're modeling it as close as we can to the, their network, or similar when it comes to the physical plants. We have an in-house construction team as well. We are about forty five employees right now. Majority of our construction firm, we do directional drilling, vibrating plows, we do a large amount of our own build. We also use contractors, because obviously forty five people isn't going to get a lot of mileage in every county. So we've done a lot of builds with different contractors, and we've already prepared for this, so we've talked to our contractors now, and we're already set for, I think, twenty drills with the contractors. For ours, we have three other directional drills on order, and we're looking to expand tremendously to do as much as possible in-house, because by doing it in-house, the prices become cheaper, and we're able to stretch, stretch the dollar just a little bit further.
So, and I know it seems like we might have come out of nowhere, however, we have a very long history in telecommunications. Out of Kent County, we've been in Kent County, we've been building out quite a bit of Kent County and have a lot of support in Kent County, as well as Queenins County. We are also the official I S P of Wishkirk County, and we have been building in Wishkirk County, has completed our projects as well as overlapping with our D O F areas. So we've been building in the art off areas. So as many of you may know, federal grants take a long, long time to come. Long, is, you think long, and then you add an extra long to it, and that's about how long it takes. So we've been building out the art off areas in preparation for getting the art off done. There are milestones that we have to do. So we've been building out a year in advance, as well as, in this case, we know the grants are coming. We've already been building out, we haven't been waiting for government grants to help us build this, we've already started. If you wait, then you'll never get the work done, so we've started on our own dime. We're a pretty, I would say we're a pretty good sized company. Like Andrew said, we have forty five employees. We're actively hiring right now, more employees, as well as lease the Snow Hill building for Wishkirk County of that liquor store building, that's a forty seven thousand where foot warehouse. That is where we're trying to put our base of operations in for this area, as well as make that one of our headquarters for the call centers. We'd like to hire local people. The greatest thing ever is when someone calls us in Kent County and says, where are you guys located? And I say, near the roundabout. We only have one roundabout. And you would see the, the change, the tone on their personalities completely changes, oh, you're local. So when we worked at Verizon, that was one of the biggest complaints, they didn't want to call other areas. They didn't want, people in Maryland didn't want to call New York. It's funny, it's, you know, United States. But having someone local is, is what we're planning on doing, is trying to keep as many local people as possible, hire local installers from here. We really do have a big heart when it comes to ex Verizon people, because we've all have the same, it's like a military background, but it's a Verizon background. But we've been around since two thousand twelve, so it's ten years. I know, it seems like we just came out of nowhere, but we just weren't in this county. That's probably, we didn't advertise here, so.
So we are actively hiring, so if anybody hears and is interested, please contact us. Both installers, construction crew, outside plant, inside plant, engineers, every, pretty much every aspect of the position a telecom uses.
And a little bit more about our company. We do things a little differently, we're consumer focused. So we've taken everything that we learned at Verizon and adjusted it towards what we like. One of the things that we do not like is we don't like contracts, so we do not charge contracts when customers sign up. They're like, where's the paperwork? Yeah, here's the invoice, just pay your bill. So we don't have contracts, we, we don't charge extra for long driveways. In Kent County, we had a driveway that was a mile and a half, and we were all crying as we were doing it, but we did it anyway, it didn't cost extra. We do sell fiber optic internet up to ten gigabit, so if anybody needs ten gigabit, like a school or a large business, we would have that. We also are, going to have our TV product done soon, we do home phone, we accept the A C P program, which is the Affordable Connectivity Program, which helps lower income families and older families receive forty five dollars off their internet per month.
We have, we have a three-year rate guarantee, the rates aren't going to go up, so that's a big thing, is we're not doing teaser rates, where you come in at a small rate, and three months later it's double, and then three more months, it's, it's so large, you don't know that, how you got to that spot. So, and we have three different internet speed tiers, because the gigabit internet, even though it's, it's the sexy word for internet, gigabit, not everybody needs that, only a larger family needs it. So two people at home that are watching Netflix and some Facebook is good at a hundred megabit internet. So we start off at sixty nine ninety nine, it's seventy bucks, and then for ten dollars more, we have a four hundred meg plan, and for ten dollars more, it's the gigabit. So it's sixty nine, seventy nine, eighty nine, so it's three different tiers. We are capable of doing, like Andre said, up to ten gigabit. We are not publicizing that right now, because the C P Es, the, the customer routers, they're just not really mainstream to do faster than a gigabit. You can get them, they're just very expensive, and right now, two and a half gig, we can, we can sell you if you have your own router, or we could buy a router. It's just not, today's technology just doesn't beat it. If somebody really wanted it, we can sell it to them, the equipment's already capable of it. All the equipment we deploy is capable of ten gigabit. So if somebody wants that, we can.
I know there's been, of course, this has been a topic that's, obviously rural broadband's really been a tough topic, especially for the pandemic, so I appreciate it, it's good to see you, an eastern shore company doing well, and thank you guys for what you do.
From what it appears, there's ten zones, ten unserved zones in Wacomico County, from the maps that you all were supplied from Wacomico County. From what you're saying, it appears that you are, are solving the issues for five of those ten zones, because you're taking the east side of the county, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I also noted that you had said that, you know, with, with the, the fact that you've, you're only spending fifteen, fifteen million now, is that right?
Uh, well, thirteen million, and then the grant will be covering a close to ten million. So the rest will come out of our pocket.
So I suppose, my point is, is it looks like you've managed to do it for about fifteen thousand dollars a home, if I'm right?
This, this area was a little more populated, I believe, than the other side.
Okay. So, because my real question, I guess, predicting two thousand homes at a fifty, fifty million dollar price tag, which is what the F C C awarded you, having already done the number of houses that you're planning to do now, does that mean that you still, instead of maybe two thousand total, you'll be able to do about thirty three hundred or thirty five hundred homes?
The fifty six million is for the entire state of Maryland and Delaware, fifteen different counties in the state of Maryland and fif, three counties in Delaware. So the, the whole grant is for all of, all of it. I think Wishkirk, I'm sorry, Wacomico, we, I don't remember the numbers, but I think we had close to three million dollars in R D O F funding for Wacomico.
Right.
So that would help towards this grant, so some of the, the extra will come out of the R D O F grant. We did apply for both sides of the grant, and we submitted, when I say both sides, the east and the west side. The state of Maryland only awarded us one of the two grants, and they, because they had to share through other counties and other internet providers. We do plan on reapplying, using the same application that we've already submitted and created, for the other side to finish the areas that are considered and observed.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry. No, you're. So if other, because there's other companies that have done this. I know on the west side of town, Maryland Broadband has completed the, the, the route on Nanticoke, and now they're going all the way to Waterview. So there's, there's different things going on throughout the county, you're not the only one in the county doing things.
Anybody can build, there's nobody stops, can't stop a provider from building.
Yeah, that, that's one of the most misunderstood talking points that we hear from county to county, is the internet provider claims that if the county doesn't partner with the internet provider, that that internet provider cannot build in the county, which is entirely false. It's, it's, it's just a tactic they're use, or people are using. Any, any internet provider has access to the rights away. If you're a C E L E C or utility company, you have access, legal access to the right of way. There's a nineteen ninety four telecommunications act that is a federal law, a federal act, that states that the use of the rights away are, has to be available. So yes, Maryland Broadband is our partner, so we're a member of Maryland Broadband. Maryland Broadband creates the middle mile. Sometimes they build the last mile, but they do not serve the end customer.
So Maryland Broadband is a great partner. I'm not sure of how much you guys know about them. Without them, a lot of the rural broadband just would be unfeasible to, to spend that much money. And they have access to not only their own fiber, but Do-its fiber and other, other fiber that's available. So we use them as much as we possibly can to, to jump ahead and to get to different areas. And that's what we'll be using for the two different spots. If you look at the maps, there's two different areas that aren't connected together. And we have a.
Old, Old Eden Road is going to be connected through Maryland Broadband, through the middle mile, back over to the Pittsville area where our remote central office is located.
So if the, if there's two, two thousand homes in the county is what you've determined, you say you're doing nine hundred, at least about eleven hundred more, eleven, eleven hundred more, that would give you, with, with this cost at about thirteen point three, so you'd need around six, over sixteen million more to finish the west side of the county, correct?
Yeah, so the other grant was, I believe, between twelve or thirteen million dollars. We're able to cut costs, because we do quite a bit of ourself, so, construction in-house.
A lot of this stuff, we're going to have to get contractors.
Yeah, so some of the stuff will have subcontractors do it, but we do, we find ways to save money, that's the reason why the price is lower. Unfortunately, with the inflation, every time we turn around, they're, they're raising the rates on fiber, and they're raising the rates on conduit and boxes. So longer we wait, more it's going to be. I can give you an example, in Wishkirk County, when we first won the R F P in Wishkirk County as the official internet provider, the C T C created a feasibility study, a broadband feasibility studying, and put in there, it was about fifty six, fifty seven million dollars to build out the entire area that's considered no served, not overbuilding, but just the no served areas, as well as building the middle mile. It was around fifty some million dollars, we agreed with the, the assessment. Now it's over seventy four million, because it's two years later.
Yeah, and the supplies have all gone up by thirty, forty percent, which is shocking when you look at, I look at note invoice, I'm like, I paid so much less for this just two years ago, and lead times are now over a year in some fiber and handhelds. So that was one of the things that we did, was we purchased a lot of the fiber for last year, knowing that we had a lot of stuff coming up. So a lot of the fiber is just now starting to come. We've ordered the conduit, the day that we got it awarded, we ordered a hundred and fifty miles of conduit, which is going to be here sometime towards the end of the year. So you have to really jump on this and, and get the supplies quickly, else the lead times are so long.
Local electric cooperative, you know, is just talking about doing, you know, broadband, are you going to be overlapping them any, or are you going to try to be avoiding?
It's possible. The intent is not with the grant money, but the R D O F, if the state awards a grant on top of the R D O F, then we are obligated with the R D O F to do that area regardless.
It's, it's a different type of fiber, when I say type, it's different use. So Maryland Broadband creates the middle mile fiber, so it's basically a long haul. So.
You're talking with electric company?
Oh, were you, were you talking about Maryland Broadband?
No.
Oh, cha-ta.
So, yeah.
I said electric cooperative, I didn't use.
Yeah. Because that's what we call Maryland Broadband, Co-op.
So I mean, I just figured, you could serve more people if you, if the two of you didn't overlap.
I agree with you, a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah, if they're, if, if they have fiber for lease, we would lease what we need. And we've also made a comment to them before, if they wanted to lease our fiber, it's available if we have paths for them.
So for distribution fiber, ideally, there should not be overlap with grants. The, that's what we were told, is they're not supposed to do that. Now, I do know that some of the grant money that the Co-op has did overlap our R D O F area, which is causing overbuilds, and so what we're trying to do is trying to stay away from them where we can. It's not always possible, because we do have an obligation with the R D O F and commitments as well.
So, just to finish up on my prior question, the sixteen to twenty million that's still needed to finish the rest of the county, what, how do you anticipate receiving those funds? I'm assuming, we don't have to go through another R F P for all this, right? I mean, is this something that we're looking to your company to, to finish?
So there are several more grants coming up, so we will be applying for them. Some of them, we need county support, some of them we don't. Since the R D O F was already won, and we've already had the application in, we're just going to resubmit the application when the Office of Statewide Broadband opens up the next grant application. Rumor has it it's going to be really soon. And the state of Maryland will have an additional a hundred million dollars to be split amongst all the counties. One thing to note, I know, well, to state that there was no county money that came from this grant. We were doing the match, some counties match, some counties don't match. I, I believe the real reason why we won this one, there's a great need here. And you, the counties never won any grants before when it comes to broadband. And number two, because of the R F P process, I truly believe that is a really good indication to statewide, State Office of Statewide Broadband, that you guys are serious about getting this stuff done.
But your rates were very good, too.
Yeah.
And with the R F P. Now, what's your timeframe on, on finishing out where, where you are right now on the east side?
So we have, well, we haven't even signed the documents yet with the State Office of Statewide Broadband. We truly believe that in August, we'll be signing the M O U, and once that's signed, then the grant is now released. We have a three-year timetable to do it in, but we believe we're going to be able to do it in under a year.
Good, that'd be good. Why did you choose the east side of the county instead of the west side?
We, we didn't. That was the Office of Statewide Broadband that chose that. So we were, we received from the county all the areas that were no served, and the grant was only worth ten million dollars. So we only could apply for ten million dollars. Anything above and beyond ten million dollars would come out of our pocket, that's why we're paying three million out of, for the west side. So we submitted two applications, one application was chosen and one application was denied. And there was the reason, because there wasn't enough money to go around every county.
Okay, okay, so that was the state, that wasn't Maryland Broadband, that was the state office.
Yeah, Office of Statewide Broadband, Rick Gordon's office.
Yeah, we sometimes don't know why, why these positions, like with Maryland Broadband, when they put a trunk line in, we don't know why they do it. We just find out through tri-county council meeting or somewhere else, hey, there's, there's a trunk line here.
Yeah, so Maryland, Maryland Broadband is not a competitor, that's what makes them a great partner.
Right, we don't complain about, we're not complaining.
Yeah, no, I'd say, so what makes, well, what makes them, you know, really beneficial to us is, we know whatever fiber they're putting in, we can rent, and that, that's a benefit to us, and we don't have to turn around and say, oh, they just took all that, that neighborhood, and they're, they're not a competitor. So having them put trunk lines in, help, definitely helps the, the community, because we're able to use it.
So the state has a hundred million grant money to give out, thirteen million's not much out of that, do you think you're going to get it?
We know we'll get something somewhere, we just don't know the logic behind it. When I did speak to the Office of Statewide Broadband, they said it's a scoring criteria, and I think the reason why we, though, we won this side versus the other side is we had more customers, letter of support from customers than we did on the west side, west side. So I think they saw that, and that's dividing, the factor of which one they were going to pick. So I, I'm not sure, I think it's, there's a great need, and there's a lot of territory I think it's, there's a great need and there's a lot of, uh, territory that needs to be done.
So, that leads into my next thought. If you don't get the 13 million, do you prepare, uh, yourself to ask the county for the difference?
Um, if the county has a desire, like I know in some counties, they have ARPA funds, they're using the ARPA funds for the, uh, county, uh, for the broadband. Um, it's if the county wants to have that done. If not, we will build out as we, um, can in the areas that are no-served. And that is our specialty. We have, how many miles of fiber?
I think 2,000.
Two, uh, 2,000 miles of fiber already in Kent County and Queen Anne's County and-
And that's, that's distribution fiber, uh, not necessarily backbone fiber. So, it's not something that runs from here to Florida and back. It's literally neighborhood, side street. It's, what makes a big difference when understanding the fiber, it's, it's getting into all the communities. So, we have a lot of fiber out there right now.
Yeah.
But, again, we focus on distribution, not backbone. If we need backbone and nobody's there, we build it. If there's an option, we use somebody else's because it's, it's the way to stretch that dollar to the furthest you can in order to get into the communities and get more service.
I'll be back in September, October, okay? So, you can share with us again, uh, your success on that.
Yeah, definitely.
Anything else you wanna mention to the public?
Um, I think the Pittsfield area for Deer Creek is a partnership with us and Maryland Broadband. They're, they're paying it, we're using, um, their, um, fiber. And that's gonna be connected in, any day now. So, the, we, we call it Deer Creek, which is a community right underneath Pittsfield. So, that is-
Off of Morris Road.
Yeah, so that is going to be lit, uh, I would say within maybe one or two weeks. And, uh, so we'll, we'll have our footprint in and our remote cabinet. So, that's gonna be the, the starting point. So, it's gonna be here right before the grant money's even awarded.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is that, uh, I know a lot of people here don't know us. Um, if you guys ever wanna come down to Kent County or in Wushka County where we're already starting, or even when we start in this area, if you wanna see our equipment in action, um, hop on the plow. If you wanna hop on the plow, the drill's a little too dangerous, so I'm not gonna suggest you guys hop on the drill.
Joe'll take you up on that.
Thank you for the offer.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's fun. If you haven't seen a plow in action, it shakes everything. It's, it's awesome. It's a huge plow. Um, and it's, it's really good in farmland and it's, it's pretty neat. It's neat to watch. Uh, I stood on top of it, you don't wanna stand on it.
No, you have, you need to sit.
Yeah, you need to sit.
You might as well be a milkshake.
Yeah, yeah, but, um, just, just to add that, we have a lot of experience. I know a lot of people, I, you know, they don't know, they don't, haven't heard of us in this area. And, uh, anybody watching that, we've, we come from a very long history of internet. Um, like I said, all our installers, our splicers, everybody, I mean, combined, we might have four, 500, uh, years of ex, combined experience. Um, we, we're a very, uh, customer-oriented, um, uh, provider. Uh, if you look at our Facebook page, you'll see that, that we have almost perfect stars or Google reviews are perfect stars. Uh, we have a really, really good conservative rates, $69 if, if you have the APC program. You'll be paying less than $30 a month for 100, 100 megabit synchronous internet unlimited and, which is really awesome.
We're moving to Pittsfield.
What's that? Well, there, just because, uh, we're building this area as, as a no-served, the Pittsfield area, doesn't mean we're not gonna be overbuilding. Um, we don't, we, we'll overbuild on our own dime where we see that it makes sense. Um, so if you're stuck with a company that you're not really happy with, um, it is a
Give us time, we're gonna expand.
Yeah, yeah, we'll expand.
Nothing wrong with competition.
No.
It brings, it reduces the rate, yeah, the rates down.
Great.
So, thank you so much for letting us, uh, have a conversation today.
All right, thank you, appreciate you guys for the time, gentlemen.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate your good work.
We'll see you guys in September.
Thanks, sounds good. Looking forward to it. Next item we have on the agenda is a letter of support to the Rural Maryland, Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund Grant. Uh, Mr. Dave Ryan is here from, uh, Director of Salisbury Economic development. Dave, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Just give us an overview, if you don't mind, and take your time.
Sure, happy to do it. Um, we're asking for a letter of support for a grant application to the Maryland Department of Commerce. This is via the tri-county council. Back in, uh, February, uh, the state of Maryland offered, uh, the five regional councils and the, uh, state, um, grant funds to be used for the attraction and retention of, of business, jobs, and overall economic activity. Um, the more jobs, the better, and the more economic impact, uh, the better. Um, the regional projects were encouraged, and for this project, we did reach out to our neighbor in jurisdictions, but everybody wants to be friendly until you have to divvy up 10 million dollars, uh, for, for a regional project. So, I think the consensus is, uh, pretty much, uh, 3.2 million per county. And, um, our proposal is to, um, we have one project to propose. It's an extensive project and a comprehensive project, I believe, uh, but is to enhance the, um, growth and development of the Salisbury, uh, Regional Airport. And the purpose is to retain and grow scheduled airline service, uh, for a region in our county. The purpose is to, um, grow the aviation and aeronautics sector so we're more resilient and have another cluster of jobs for our community in the years to come. The purpose is to, uh, offer a pipeline of talent for our industry, um, countywide in general, and the airlines specifically for aviation mechanics. But I would, I would say, we've had a great deal of in, interest from other industries than just aviation. This program we're proposing, and I'll get to it in a second, um, it teaches hydraulics and electronics, electricity and welding and soldering and composite work, uh, all trades that are in demand, um, in a great way across our county. The purpose is to create meaningful career opportunities and a pathway to those career opportunities for area residents. And the purpose is to build that foundation so we can really create, uh, solid economic growth and development at the, at the airport. We propose to do that in three ways. One-
Back up from that mic just a little bit.
Okay, there we go. I, I didn't know if I was too close or not. Nicole, you always tell me I'm blowing your, your AirPods out, but, um, so, um, so we propose to do this in, in two ways, uh, three ways. One is to establish a, it's a Part 147 certified aviation, FAA certified aviation maintenance technician school, a program at Salisbury Regional Airport. This is a 1,900-hour certification. At the end, the student will get a certificate and be eligible to, uh, sit for the airframe and PowerPoint, or airframe or PowerPoint, uh, certification exam to become a AMP certified mechanic. The University of Maryland Eastern Shore would be our, uh, operator and our partner for, for this. Uh, the university has an existing aviation, um, science degree program, a four-year program. They have an existing pilot training program. And with this, they'll have an aviation mechanic program, albeit on a certificate basis. It's a 12-month, uh, uh, school. Secondly, we propose to, uh, create a strategic plan for SBY, and this would set the foundation and the vision and the goals and objectives that align with the airport's master plan, uh, for future development, using all of the amenities at, at SBY with particular focus on the school and how we further exploit that. Exploit's probably the wrong word, but let's say exploit for the greater, for, for more jobs and, and economic activity at the airport. And third, we propose to pursue, uh, shovel-ready sites for development opportunities at the airport. Shovel-ready sites are, are those sites that have been designed and engineered, or buildings that are designed, engineered, and permitting issues have been addressed so that a user, uh, can reduce, uh, the time to actual construction. And we think we can eliminate that time by 12 to 18 months or so. That reduces risk for the county, it reduces risk for the, uh, user, and it allows us to create, uh, more jobs quicker. And so, when you think about it, we have a regional, great, great regional airport here, we've got airlines that are headquartered here, we have, that have a large maintenance base here, which is why we've retained commercial scheduled airline service over the years. And, um, an HBCU with the four-year aviation science degree program, pilot training program, and now an AMT program. It's a robust offering that's perhaps unparalleled anywhere else, uh, in the country. So, we're seeking a letter of support, uh, for this, uh, project.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
This is an amazing, a, a absolutely amazing plan. Um, I could not be more excited to see our tax dollars being used to bring sustainable jobs. Uh, I think that this is, you, you really went above and beyond here, and as, you said this in conjunction with UMES, correct?
It, it, it is, and, and the airlines, um, we have, um, we have, um, and we've been at it about a year and a half, we, we had no clue. We just knew there was a need.
Mm-hmm.
And it was an important need, and it's a timely need. Um, but we didn't know how we were gonna fund it a year and a half ago, and we still have time, we still have room, as considerable amount of work has been done. A considerable amount of work, uh, needs to be done. But we have very, very strong partners in the county, um, state of Maryland, the tri-county council, uh, Piedmont Airlines specifically, host of other industries. We've talked to, um, from, um, you know, Chesapeake Shipbuilding to, uh, Delaware Elevator and Orsted Wind and, and lots of other, uh, companies. Um, and the University of Maryland Eastern Shore offers, uh, real, real staying power and can, can really spread some of those costs out-
Yeah.
Because of the other programs that they offer. The, the students, uh, completing this certificate at their option, uh, can transfer all of those credits toward a four-year degree at UMES if they so choose. That's up, that's up to them.
And will this be the, is this the only program in Maryland offer, that is, is gonna be the sole program?
There's other AMT or aviation maintenance technician programs in Maryland, one's at Hagerstown, it's operated privately by a company called Pittsburgh Institute of Aviation. Um, outside of that, Del- Delaware Tech has a program in Georgetown, uh, in our neck of the woods. Maybe another one, uh, exactly, but I'm not sure that I, I know the answer to that, but...
Questions?
Larry? Dave, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I, I do support this, anything that, um, enhances our airport. One thing I was wondering is why the program isn't going through the community college? It's not a four-year degree.
Right. Well, we, we approached, um, Werwick early on in the process, and, and they've had interest, mild interest. There's not a community college in America I think that, that, that perhaps doesn't lose money on an aviation program. It's not an inexpensive endeavor, it's an expensive program to start up. If you're thinking about engines and planes and, I think, uh, once we start this, I think you're gonna see, uh, significant investment from the airlines and other airlines into the particular program. But one reason, Mr. Dodd, is, um, it's a great question, um, is the staying power, I think, of the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. They've got about 30 pilots in their training program now, which is good for the airline they're flying today.
Three.
Okay, the, the planes are gonna be full, the tickets are gonna be expensive, the flights are gonna be iffy, uh, on time or canceled. Some people are gonna be a little testy out there, uh, given the environment we have today. Um, some communities have lost air service. Toledo, Ithaca, Islip, Dubuque, Iowa, more recently, and I suspect more in the future. I don't think we're them. Um, but this is the best way we can, we can retain that and grow it. But, uh, UMES, uh, the staying power, and I think we can spread costs instructor-wise, that can, you know, they're gonna have multiple instructors here. And, um, and then it can, the credits can transfer to a, to a four-year program.
Thank you.
And they, they do have a presence at the airport now. The pilot training program is, is housed at the airport. I'm not doing too good on this. Sorry, guys, I, I'm not trying to-
Anything that doesn't happen to anybody else, just you, though?
I, that, then, now, they, you and my wife agree, then.
Yes, Josh.
I was gonna say, of course, you, you took my comment there, which I was gonna mention, was that, where there's communities across the country that are losing their air service, and we certainly do not wanna be in them. We, as a, you know, especially over the last, well, six years, maybe before my time here, uh, put a lot of money and a lot of investment into the airport. Um, and, uh, the, you know, I'll also say that, you know, I spent, um, six years on the Rural Maryland Council. The point of these kinds of grants or this kind of focus is to have regional projects. This is something that, you know, will ben, benefit the entire lower shore. So, um, that'll then allow us to, to train folks here, um, and then hopefully they stay here and that they, uh, you know, and, and then that then keeps their, our airport humming and that this is a place, um, you know, that, that continues to grow in the future. So, I appreciate you, um, helping lead on this and put it together.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your, uh, your, your support. You're, you're quite right, but we have to offer real value for, for companies to locate here. And that real value is, is talent. What better way-
For a county.
-to grow than to invest in its own people? And, uh, and, uh, meaningful careers that are, that are, that are here that will also unapologetically attract new, new, new businesses to the community.
Any questions, comments? Uh, take a consensus from council in favor of sending the letter of support.
Sure.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, unanimously, we're okay? All right, Dave, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Next item on the agenda is discussion, uh, on the text amendment for organic liquid fertilizer storage tanks in Lake Kamiko County. Uh, Mr. Mitchell is here, uh, Mr. Wilbur is here to assist us with this. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
What I'd like to do is just, if you would, I sent a outline out, and I think everybody's gotten a lot of information from the various people that have an interest in this. I know I have, and I think most of the emails I get show it, it went to everybody on the council, or nearly everybody. Um, Councilor Hastings and Councilor McCain have made specific, uh, um, recommendations. But the purpose of this outline was just to go through the various steps and the things that you really should think about. So, and I, I apologize, I know the prohibition on the new storage tanks was something I raised, and, um, it, it, uh, if the council is interested in pursuing that, I would like a chance to get more deeply involved in that and see i- if it is, uh, truly, uh, something that can be supported. There's, yes, there's information on both sides, um, and, uh, the, the, um, planning commission came down on the, on the no-prohibition side, and I used the memo that was, uh, involved with them, but, um, so the, the question, the question you look at is, is, assuming that, that the tanks will be permitted in the county, um, you'll see I went through a lot of different questions that have come up, you know? Can they be limited to the end user's land? Yes. Um, it does cost the farmer, it's cost to construct, it's, uh, loss of tillable land for the tank, there's time expense to maintain it. The question is, does it monitor the, does it, um, benefit the county? And that's somewhat questionable, um, because now you're gonna have smaller tanks, but they're gonna be in many different locations. Um, the two existing tanks will continue, uh, even, and make it unlikely that a lot of farmers would build their own. Uh, so it may be a step that's of, of no real importance. Uh, question, should it be a permitted use in any zone?
that's of no real importance. Question, should it be a permitted use in any zone? I know that Counselor Hastings had indicated that possibly a different type of tank would be permitted in industrial zone, but no one has indicated that they think it should be just a straight permitted use where you go in and you get your building permit and build. So that appears to be a consensus no. So the question then would be, would it be, the best way, if you're going to have it, would be by special exception. You have to decide which zone, and you'll see I put some pluses and minuses on the industrial zone. It's, I understand the argument that it's an industrial product, but it's clearly an agricultural use. The state views it as an agricultural product. If it's in an industrial zone, you're going to have issues in that, as I understand it, only one of the current industrial zones is not itself located either near other businesses or residences, so you're not be solving a lot of problems. The industrial zone also is going to require not just the delivery to, but the delivery back out again. And I realize that the tanks, you still may be taking a product across the county, but lots of the people using it would be nearby if it's in an ag zone. So in the ag zone, the pro is it's stored in the same zone it's used, it's closer to users, the state considers it an ag product. You have generally more acreage available, so if you put setbacks and things like that, you have some room to put them in there. You know of a lot of the reasons against that, because there are residential uses in a lot of the ag zones. But besides that, you have heavy traffic traveling on a lot of rural roads and breaking those roads down and things like that, and causing traffic issues. So you look at a special exception. The good thing about a special exception is, you heard some discussion today about you just make a good argument and you win at the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that's not how it works. You have to have evidence. You have to be making a good argument based on the evidence that you present. But the special exception can, I would recommend, and I've talked to County Attorney Wilbur about this, and I think he agrees, that the best way to approach that would be to have important threshold regulations, setbacks, possibly screening if you think that's appropriate, maybe its relationship to traffic, you know, better roads, things like that. And then some of the things that Counselor Hastings put in there, you know, the nearness to wetlands and rural legacy and things of that nature, paleo channel and all. And you put them in the special exception so that when the applicant comes to the Board of Zoning Appeals, they have a burden of proving that they can meet that standard. The way a special exception works, a permitted use is just if you meet the criteria, you're there. A special exception is basically a statement by the county that you recognize that the use of a DAF tank is appropriate in an agricultural zone. Now, you proved to us that this particular place you want to put it is appropriate within that zone, because some places, ag zone wouldn't be appropriate. And, you know, that's why it's a special exception instead of a permitted use. So you could put these various things, and you'll see there's a whole lot of things came out of the top of my head about the various criteria you could put on to qualify for the special exception. And then I would recommend that if you think of other issues that could be important, that wouldn't be very common, that you could authorize the Board of Zoning Appeals that if you find this X condition, then you may apply additional requirements. That would make it so, it was very specific to the site. And some of those things would not occur in each place that it's located. And just running through some of these things, the setbacks, the screening, whether it's lit at night and how that lighting affects neighborhoods, how far it is from the road, depending on type of neighborhood, you can change some of these. So you can say, many of you've seen those, near churches, near schools, near residential areas, you can have different conditions. You've seen the things that have been presented by the Wycomic Environmental Trust, the Friends of Nanico, Lower Shore Land Trust, and those groups. You've heard them talk about things that have come from Mr. Taylor and Mr. Burnett. One thing that I think you have to be very cautious about is this. You're going into an agricultural situation, and if you, and this is one of the reasons I didn't pursue the ban any further, if you start banning products or uses, keeping in mind that the state regulates the use and application of DAF and many other products, it's the county that's regulating the storage. Well, that's in essence, you're regulating the tank. So if you begin to put very harsh regulations and possibly prohibitions, you may be affecting other uses that you don't intend. So when you regulate DAF as a liquid fertilizer produced by the DAF process, well, it's a short step to regulating some other type of agricultural product that isn't DAF.
I'm going to have to interrupt you there, Mr. Mitchell, because I couldn't disagree with that more. I mean, I'm trying to let you finish that, but that's, yeah, I disagree with that.
Well, I'm not saying--
We're being very specific here. We're talking about DAF. We're not talking about grain tanks. We're not talking about manure sheds. So--
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that. And--
I mean, this is starting to sound a little bit like a, I don't know, I feel like I'm being sold here. I mean, I want us to be able to discuss this here.
Yeah.
No, I understand. I understand that. I'm just saying that this wouldn't be the first time that a group went to an attorney and he said, you know, that's a whole lot like what you're having a problem with, and maybe we can build off of that. That's what we do. But anyway, that's just something I'm pointing out. The other issue is, is DAF really going to be a problem in the future? You have two tanks. One is huge, and it's a, we know that Purdue is in the process of getting out of supplying this stuff. And, you know, how much of it's used, we heard from the Farm Bureau that it's not used by a lot of people, a lot of farmers. So it may not be an issue in the future. That doesn't mean you don't deal with it now. So I think you've seen, I mean, we could talk about the various possibilities of what you might think should be regulated. Most of those are in here. Josh had a bunch of those, and they were all environmentally important. What I think, though, and this will be the end of my presentation, that what Mr. McCain and Mr. Hastings had said in their emails is looking at specific environmental issues, but there's a whole lot of other things to deal with. Like I said, the traffic, the screening, whether you want to vegetate or screen or berm, hours of operation if it's close enough to certain, you know, the fact that the tank is a distance from someplace doesn't make a big difference if at five in the morning, they're rolling through neighborhoods and schools and things like that, whether you can stage the vehicles on the highway or the road waiting to get in or coming out, whether you could stack them up like that. There's a lot of those issues to be looked at that don't, that affect how, and odor control and things of that nature, that affect how it affects the county.
I've got a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
It's for Mr. Wilbur or you, Mr. Mitchell. It's back at the top there. I would say number one, B, one B, state considers it an ag product. Do they really?
They consider it a soil amendment.
A soil amendment. Who's testing this? We've been talking about this for three years, and I haven't figured out who's testing it to see what actually is in the tanks.
I believe the state regs say that they test once a year. It's not frequent testing.
So that one time they tested, it could be an ag product, and the rest of the year it can be anything they put in there. Because it sounds like it's a waste product.
Well, I'd like to go right back to 1A, where all this started, and that was, you know, where Mr. Mitchell comments that, you know, the county does not have the authority to prohibit, and preferences in the memo, but, you know, we've also all been inundated with other opinions on that. And, you know, the information seems to clearly state that is not the case. I mean, the county does have the authority to regulate storage of waste products. I mean, it's actually a local, it's, you know, the state said that. State controls the application of the product. The local authorities have the control over storage facilities. So, you know, the county certainly does have the authority to regulate if they, you know, that was a choice.
If we regulate it, would we say that we were prohibiting storage tanks? Because I think this was, this was what we were trying to, the cat that Mr. Mitchell was trying to skin. Do we prohibit storage tanks or DAF storage tanks? Can we isolate it to a DAF?
Yes, we would prohibit specifically as defined already, like in the legislation. You know, we specifically have defined, you know, dissolved air flotation open air storage tanks would be what would be prohibited. You know, this would be specific to DAF, not storage tanks, you know, dissolved air flotation storage tanks.
Can we go back to the question that we ended the last meeting with? Because that's why we didn't make it, get a consensus or do anything last meeting was because we were going to get more information on whether we were able to do this or not. And so I'm looking at the opinion of why we can't ban the storage of DAF. And I'm not, I'm not really sure where it's coming from. Is there like a COMAR law? Or, I mean, I see here that the Eastern Shore counties do not ban it, but then in Hartford, you can't store it. So what's the basis for saying that the county cannot ban the storage of DAF?
The idea behind what was written here on that one page is there's 12 weeks during the year that it cannot be applied. So that would certainly infer that there has to be storage somewhere. Okay. Now, whether that's going to be on the site of the processing plant, is it going to be in a county that's not where the site of the processing plant is? That becomes the question.
Because we're not saying people can't spread it, they can't use it, they can't, I mean, they can buy it to fertilize. We're just saying that, the question I have was, can we ban the storage of it?
And there's been a couple of memos that have come out in the last couple of days. I have not had a chance to read those cases yet. I think Andy and I would like to look at them. One's about solar farms, the other's about pesticides. So look at the application of those cases to this organic liquid, we'll call it.
It's kind of to answer your question, it's part of what Mr. Grouse said earlier tonight, that the county, in using this process, the storage wasn't in Wycomic County the last 20, 30 years. It was coming from other areas. So the storage wasn't an incremental part of that industry until they put one here, you know, a few years ago. So there are alternatives. I don't think you can say that banning is going to compromise that whole process 100% because we had a different process not too long ago. Okay, if that helps.
Yeah.
Right. Obviously, before there were tanks, if that product was available, it came in probably in tanker trucks--
Right.
--and was delivered to the farms.
And we can't do anything about that.
Yeah.
You know, but we can do something about storage tanks.
I think--
300,000 gallon storage tanks.
Right.
I guess the question, the first question would be for the council, because there's going to be a couple of different options, I guess. First question would be whether or not the council would like to take the measures to prohibit DAF storage tanks or not. I think that's the first thing we need to decide, first of all, because there's no sense in really going through all this minutia of details if we're not going to be in favor of it. That being the case, the second issue might be deciding whether or not we wanted an ag district, whether we wanted an industrial district. And the third part would be what type of special exceptions we'd like to see, what amendments we would want to have implemented, should we choose to continue with that process. So I guess it would be fair, yes, Ms. Hurley?
I was just going to mention, you mentioned banning the DAF storage tank. I recall the zoning administrator mentioning, I think it was also discussed during public comments this evening, that if that process is changed slightly, or the, you know, the whole composition of the material is changed, would it still be filled with some kind of liquid fertilizer? That would be my concern. I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, that was Clark Meadows that said that.
That was a couple of times.
We're not talking about fertilizer. We're talking about, once again, dissolved air flotation waste material and open storage tanks. So if someone comes along with an anaerobic digester, you know, proposal, this doesn't affect that. You know, that goes to our regular zoning code, because that's a closed system. You can, you know, that still can be, actually, that, I think, right now, that's permitted, actually, I think, in the I-2, I think. Clark's not here to answer that, but--
If you use, if you use the terminology DAF at some point in time, we'll go back a few years now. I think it was Nixon that put in price controls on grocery stores. So the meat companies just changed the name of the cuts so they could raise the price of meat. Okay.
And I think we need to address that. You go ahead and finish.
So at some point in time, some scientists could come along and rename this product.
Right. And I think, I think they need--
So if we're doing, if you do DAF tanks, if you say, well, we're not going to allow DAF, at some point in time, somebody's going to say, I want to build a storage tank for whatever product. Okay, do we go through all this again? So.
That's what I'm trying to say is, like, there's where Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Wilbur earn their money in terms of the language. You know, I think it needs to say something to the effect of, you know, dissolved air flotation waste type products or similar--
Or other such products, producing the same kind of odor, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, right, right. Exactly. It's pretty standard language. It kind of tries to address that issue.
I think the key word is waste.
Right. And it has to be open air. Once again, you know, closed, if somebody's doing the closed system, that's different.
If I can point out, and I know this is somebody that's got an agenda, but the poultry, the chicken association, first, to answer Mr. Dodd's question, they cite the Maryland Department of Ag as it's a registered soil amendment so that it is an ag. But--
That's great.
And I may have lost--
That's a creative terminology.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they refer to it, of course, this is somebody that's in the business, but they refer to it not as waste, but as residuary, residual, residuals.
Right. And I'll help them out there. Residual from a manufacturing processing plant is waste.
Let me ask a question. Let me ask a question. This banning, okay, it's a pretty broad brush. There are some smaller farmers who have tanks that are, and I don't really know this for sure, but I've heard that there's smaller farmers that have smaller DAF tanks. Let's say maybe there's 1,000 gallon tanks or something like that. Do we need to, if we decide to go this route, do we need to make sure that we put some type of mention in there as to the size of the tank, if it's going to be a regulating measure?
That's one of the things, not only a maximum, but you may be put exempt under a certain amount to reach what you're talking about. No more than this, but if it's under a certain, you know, 1,000 gallons, it's not regulated the same way.
What would that number be?
We do have our Director of Department of Planning and Zoning on Zoom. If anybody would like to consult with her on any of your discussion points.
Oh, hey, Lori, how are you?
muted.
You're muted.
Can you hear me now? I do apologize. A little bit under the weather, but I'm here.
Yeah, the question that came up was, you know, if there was a decision made as far as a prohibition of tanks, DAF tanks, would, should there be some type of a restriction on size in the legislation so that we weren't squeezing out a small farmer that had 1,000 gallon tank? We have no idea whether 10 million or 2 million is a lot or not enough.
That's a good question. I think that, you know, from the standpoint, whether or not, if you think of anything that's up to 150,000, you just need to decide, you know, again, what that number would be. It's like, I think in one of the times that we probably presented, I think that we had something in the legislation as a draft was up to 150,000. So that would, you know, that would actually be and actually consider consideration.
Yeah, I don't think that's what you're asking. You're asking about the small farmer, and I think you would do what she's saying at the top end, no bigger than, but you'd say, however, if you're less than this, these regulations or some of these regulations or however you would phrase it, don't apply to you.
Yes.
I know Mr. Wilbur's writing it down. He's, as I've been watching. I think if we go down that route, the thing to say is obviously, this is about the open tanks, you know, the closed, theoretically in this case, to answer your question, a farm could still have an anaerobic digester or a digester-type product, which includes, I mean, most farms, you know, most any dairy operation throughout P A, you know, they have the, these systems, which are, you know, like giant bags essentially, that, you know, that are very thick. Those would be on-farm use, and those systems are typically closed systems. They don't have the negative effects that we would, that we've experienced. And of course, they're a kind of a reverse system, anaerobic, as opposed to an oxygen system like DAF, which then opens it up and it's aereable and able to go and spread over, you know, a large parts of area. So if we did go down that route, then you'd want to make sure that we, you say, open air tank or any kind of open tank as opposed to a closed system, which could still happen.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not aware of any, I mean, usually DAF, it's all about quantity. I'm not aware of, like, farmers that have small, you know, I mean, like the tank, the Valley Protein tanker trucks, you know. Somebody in the audience might know how many gallons those tankers are, but--
6,000.
6,000 or 6,000-- the audience might know how many gallons those tankers are, but 6,000 or 6,000 gallon tankers, yeah, I mean, so like I say, they're not going to, that's the smallest, you know, it could be at least 6,000 gallons, because that's what a tanker's carrying. Yeah, they're not going to have a tanker going to a farm, and it's not, you know, so just to put it in some kind of perspective.
I went back and I looked at my, excuse me, my notes here. The previous legislation was less than 150,000 was by right. Anything greater than that would have to go before the Board of Appeals.
I think maybe what we might do, simplify it, is just to make a decision as to whether or not we want to prohibit it or not, period.
Yeah, that's a good place to start, because you said--
Yeah, and then if anything, feedback from the public as to whether or not there should be any exceptions to that. We could certainly entertain that.
Before we make that decision--
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, go ahead.
Are we allowed to prohibit it? We've never heard of yes or no, here, Paul.
I think we want to look at that more deeply.
All right, so shouldn't we wait for that decision until--
No, no, we'll make a decision right now, and then the legal will allow us to--
Make a decision or a consensus.
It's a work session.
I think you're asking if you want us to look it up and come back.
No, we want to make a decision now, and you can review it, and if we're wrong, tell us later. I just want to get stuff, I want to move forward.
I thought that's what we asked last time.
So I would say we take a consensus on whether or not the council would like to entertain the prohibition of the storage tanks. We'll start with Councilman Ackley.
Yes.
Councilman Hastings.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, with open systems.
Open systems, yes, okay. Councilman McCain.
I'm in favor of a ban.
Vice President Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Holloway.
No.
Councilman Dodd.
Yes.
And I'm going to say yes. So we do have a 6 to 1, where we'd like to see a prohibition, okay?
Okay, got it.
We'll leave it up to the legal to try to figure out the details of it.
Yep.
Now, so that, if we could spend a couple of minutes, to try to just nail down one more. If it turns out that we have to move forward with this, we don't have the authority to ban, would we want to see it in an ag district or in an industrial? Let's knock that out. We've heard pros and cons of both, and we've had a ton of--
Do we want to go down that path? Given that's--
We'll stop at 8:00.
He says no.
I mean, seriously, I just want to know, because, I mean, I'll tell you personally, I do not think putting in the industrial zone is, it will work in Wycomica County. I think, as was noted before, that our industrial zone just happens to be too close to commercial and residential areas to begin with, and you're only going to initiate more traffic back and forth, and it's going to be more cost to a smaller farmer that might want a small DAF tank if we accept them, to have to buy more land to put in industrial instead of units of his own land to build the tank.
I'll totally disagree. Yeah, right, now, we've had this disagreement before, so we'll go back, but that's the reason it's in the industrial, and it's, we're talking about the I-2, which is by purpose is a smaller amount of area of our county because it's heavy industrial use. That's what it's designed for. It's designed for heavy traffic. That's why we have a landfill out on Brick Kilm Road, and, you know, and we still have land in those areas. The whole idea behind it is, you know, less amount of land. You know, if you say, well, you're still going to allow it in the A-1 district, well, I think it's 73% of our county's in the A-1 district, and it might be A-1 by special exception, but, you know, just to be frank, special exception really just means, yeah, we're going to make it harder for people to do it, but if they can check all those boxes, you can't stop it. You know, we're still going to get DAF in our county, so we're basically saying 73% of our county is eligible, so I would, you know, if for some reason we can't do this, which, I'm not sure why we're going down this path, but if we can't do it, the ban that we just got the consensus on, then I would say then definitely it's I-2 with the laundry list of restrictions.
Bill, 73% might be in our ag district, but, you know, that includes a lot of marshland, that includes woodland, includes, I mean, if you narrow that down, there's probably only 30 or 40% that would actually be--
So, yeah, and we got--
Farm land, call it farm land.
Right, but we also got tons of major subdivisions in our A-1 district.
Understand, understand.
Yeah, so right next to major subdivisions, we could have, you know, 100, 200 feet away, there could be a 3 million gallon DAF tank. So, you know, that's why I have--
Not if we put restrictions on, on the setbacks, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, we'll let you put like a mile and a half setback, which we're not, you know, won't happen, but--
Mile and a half setback, ready to go, mile and a half setback.
But that's the whole reason I-2 was designed for that purpose, so, you know.
And anybody else? Because we're going to have to, we're going to make a decision tonight on whether we choose to use agricultural industrial, because we've been doing it for three years. Anybody else with comments? Josh?
I put together some thoughts just on what folks had submitted from various groups from, and tried to concisely put that together, but, you know, if we, if we go down that route, obviously, it can be troublesome. You know, you don't want to have, you know, there's farmland behind, you know, Deer Run, Doe, you know, or Deer Harbor, Doe Run, or those kinds of areas, you know, that could theoretically easily have a tank in a place like that or others. So we'd have to be very careful if it were, if we, if we do, if we are relegated to go down that route, to then make sure that it does cover enough of the pieces. And Mr. Mitchell does have at least what I'd put to, what I had heard from enough folks and what people had brought to the previous meetings. And, you know, that could be 1,000 foot setback at least in many ways, but obviously, this is, you're talking about it, the open air tank being an issue that folks are smelling it, you know, two miles away or more, and, you know, you rode down a mile on a quarter or whatever, but I mean, it's honestly, we've heard from folks who have smelled it from, who claim to have smelled it from even five miles away. That's just, you know, I don't know how you regulate that.
Any comments? I was first in favor of putting it in industrial until planning, I mean, you've got to put it in industrial. Until they told me what the industrial was, I just don't think it's in, believe me, I would love to put it in industrial, I just don't think it fits for Wycomica County. That's why I think agriculture with major exceptions would have to be, would have to be done. So not in favor of it, but I just think it's a better option of the two, unfortunately, with the circumstances we have. So any other comments, questions? I will ask then, who is in favor of putting it in an industrial zone? We'll go by that. Larry, we'll start with you.
Industrial.
Joe?
No.
Ernie?
Yeah.
Industrial. Nicole?
I'm--
Would you like to say this in industrial or in agriculture?
I'm still stuck on eliminating the tanks altogether. I feel like we just need to eliminate them all together. I don't, I mean, that was my question at the last meeting, it's my question this meeting, I don't--
If it were not legal to ban it, where would you want to put them?
It's kind of part of a pie in a sky one. I--
Pass.
Just pass, yes.
Josh?
What I had sent before allows in both and is highly, highly regulated as far as where that could potentially be.
It's a tag with a 2 and 1/2 mile limit.
I didn't put that in my comments, but--
Industrial, correct.
But honestly, what I submitted before would, actually includes both. I think, personally, I think it generally fits for what it is at this level, at this scale. That is something that fits I-2 districts, and that's really where it probably should be. This is, this is something more, but that being said, I also want to point out, many, some of our I-2 districts actually do a but farmland in other areas. It's not as, looking at the map, it's not that clear cut. We do not have a very well, pardon me, our county has allowed the growth to happen in, our zoning to basically is not very clear like other counties, in which case, no matter what we do, we are going to be in rough shape if it's an open tank.
Yeah, John, there's just been an application put in to build apartments in the I-2 district, I-1 district. So, I mean, you're going to have issues there in the future, so.
Bill?
Industrial.
Yeah, industrial, I would say ag. So we've got about a 4 to 2 consensus on, to put it in industrial. At the time, I mean, we could go into the details. I'd like to thank, first of all, everybody that sent us so much information as far as their input regarding the restrictions that they'd like to see. We have so many people even here tonight that helped us with that, and many, so many organizations, and I know that together with Andy and Mr. Wilbur, we got a lot of input, and Josh, I think he did put together a very concise list of items. So a lot of work is going into it behind the scenes for people to try to sort through all this. Not going to get into it tonight. I would love to, but I just really think it's going to drag it on and may be totally unnecessary if we find out that legally we can move forward with the initial requirement, request to prohibit the tanks. So we'll leave that tonight and certainly be prepared for another meeting where we might have to discuss some of the other details and specifics that is provided to us on restrictions if necessary, okay? Please don't just drop the ball. Keep it fresh in your minds on where we are with everything. So that being said, somewhat anticlimactic, but I think we've made a decision tonight. Entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Means adjourn.